Did I make it? Yep, I made it.
How are you, Larry?
Tired. Been too many, too many hours behind a Congress Hall yesterday.
I understand.
Big old Congress Hall. All right, it's nine o'clock, please join me in flagrant. I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, and to our invisible, 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 invisible justice for all. All right, I entertain a motion to approve last week's minutes.
Make a motion to approve last week's minutes.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Matt. Think Eric might be talking to Susan.
Okay.
There he is, Mr. Bailey.
Morning.
Morning. We have a permit for a driveway entrance, Susan Bancroft, at 2029 Maple.
No.
No, and I didn't sign it yet either, so I guess I haven't. Yeah, let me sign it first.
Make sure you want to do it.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we should both know. Okay, I make a motion to approve a culver installation at 2029 Maple Road with our Public Works Department.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did you get that? Okay.
You want it back?
Yeah, I'll need that back to make sure I give it to...
And I'll just trade with you right here. This is the signatures for the mini on the loan. The blue is for you, the pink is for Ashley to sign, but it has to be signed in the blue ink.
So I entertain a motion to assign... Allow me to sign the documents for financing the mini.
Make a motion to have Chairman O'Hare sign the documents, the loan documents.
Here, second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Speaking of the mini, I see you've been working it pretty hard.
You forgot to say "all opposed."
Oh, all opposed.
Aye.
Let's keep it on the books, right?
Okay.
I see that you've been working it pretty hard. One of the things that I noticed was back on, in the 125th, when you're replacing culvers, you'd be able to get down in the ditch.
Right.
And clean those things out.
Right, and they got cleared down in the bridge as well, so it's working out very well for us. They're over on 155th and 167th on Prairie. Ditching and doing crossroad tubes as well, right now, with that piece of equipment. Storms over the weekend. We found some weak limbs or dead limbs, they came down, so got those cleaned up, were out of the roads yesterday. Asphalt on 125th. We've got halfway on one lane. See where we can get this week with Mother Nature, so moving with that. And then, last here, Jayhawk wind update. High winds and rain slowed their progress last week. They have 49 of the 70 base mids erected. Thirty-three of them of the 70 are topped out. Nineteen erected in Bourbon County and 14 erected in Crawford County. And then they plan to build two today and cross Highway 3 tomorrow if winds and weather will allow. When they cross Highway 3, KDOT will be, be there as well since they're crossing State Highway. They'll close down at 39 Highway and Arrowhead, and be down for approximately three hours late morning and early afternoon, to my understanding, but that's all depends on the weather and what the weather does. I know they're calling for some strong chances of heavy rain, so...
You know, I drove out and saw those, and I know it's the future, and I know it's people's choices, but the O'Brien Ranch was always kind of a sacred site out there.
Right.
Beautiful, beautiful. I mean, it's changed a lot, and that's the future.
Right.
But O'Brien Ranch was always just amazing to look at, but anyway.
So, but that gives you an update where we're at, where the windmills are at. They, they have started reclaiming some of the roads, or the turn radiuses and what have you, so, and they're following the road use agreement to a T. Went out to two or three different crane crossings last week, so... Anything for me?
You got the email from Nancy?
Yes, I saw that a while ago. I will...
Very good. That's all I have.
Get the stop sign, try and get it up today, and, and we'll go from there. We'll let you know that we are battling the corporate world with employees. We're starting to lose some, and I can't blame them. I've had a couple go for $5 an hour with a $500 sign on bonus. We lost a couple $4 an hour, and we lost one for $3 an hour, so just kind of give you an update where we're at there, so...
I'm going to ask Susan, and we had talked about meeting with department heads and going forward, and I have some ideas for your department, just because I know your department.
Sure.
I don't know the sheriffs or anybody else.
Sure.
But I'd like to start those hopefully in November.
Awesome.
Work with the other departments and see if there's any room to help with raises.
Awesome.
You know?
Yep.
And I know there's a lot of them in Public Works, I'm going to call the high end, it's pretty good, but the low end's the problem.
That's right, absolutely.
So maybe we can help, maybe we can't, but we're going to turn to misnumbers over here.
All right, that would be awesome, so... Because you know how that is when you get them trained, and then, and I don't blame them, you can go and...
You can't blame them.
Yeah, so...
They got a family to feed.
Absolutely, absolutely, so anyhow, I just wanted to let you know that, and all in all, things are going well, so...
Thank you, have a good day.
So I only have one, I had a call from a gentleman in Missouri again on the state line and Zink Road.
State line?
About a culver up there that's plugged. I don't know if it's on the Missouri side, is maintaining it or we are maintaining it.
State line?
I'll just text you his number.
Yeah, and that way I can call.
That way you can call him and find out what's exactly going on. We get a call about what's going on.
Right, right, and speaking of calls, I think you may have got a call about assumption out at Elm Creek or what have you.
Yes, yes.
I, I did make a phone call there, and that was solely based on assumption, so we're...
Good, thank you.
We're good there.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Anything else?
Not for me.
I think they worked on Overbrook today, on that one spot.
Okay, well, it's good, you know, like I say, I'm not the only area where, where the water's washed out across the road and...
Right.
And scattered erosion, and it's soft.
Right.
And so as we're rolling in, the soft spots I know from back, back in probably eight years ago, up there on, on Dry Ridge, there was a road there called Nizini, I think it was, that bottom fell totally out of it.
Right.
So I'm going to see if, make sure we get ahead of those spots.
Right, so, they're headed there today.
Can't do anything about the heavy, heavy rains.
Heavy rains and...
We're supposed to get again tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Heavy, heavy rain, is what they're saying, so we'll see.
Yeah.
Good for the duck hunting, I guess, so we'll see, anyhow. All right, anything else? All right, thanks.
No, thank you. No problem, duck, Eric?
What do you...
I make duck twice, and it must be the person that cooks it.
I'd rather eat cardboard.
I like the duck. No, they're not approved.
Yeah.
Well, that circle drive must be pretty important.
It is, because my daughter just had an accident in my driveway this weekend, so it's definitely important.
Cool. All righty, David?
This is Ron Brown.
And Mr. Brown?
Yep, hi.
Hello.
We were here once before, you may have remembered.
Right.
And is there some things about the process that we have that is not clearly understood? Do you have any...
Well, I recall we asked David to contact another company.
Yes, a local, just stand...
A local just to do a comparison of the type of work that you do and see if they do that type of work, and compare prices.
Right.
I don't know if that happened.
And they did come out, they haven't given us a price yet, but their work would be obviously excavating and then coating the outside, you know, of the foundation, making sure we've got water where it can be removed, but that, I think, covers the water coming in, but I think he's addressing the water wicking up into the stone.
And the other company wouldn't address that?
No. Nobody does, actually. There's a, there's a very large company that is in the restoration business that are headquartered here in Kansas. They might even be in Fort Scott, I don't know, it's Mid-Continent Restoration, you know them?
Yeah.
And we've met with them, they don't handle anything that is four feet or below, four feet above grade or below. They, they just don't do it because they don't know how to do it. There's no other solution to this. We happen to have it only because we ran into it in Europe. The inventor of this process is a Hungarian engineer that worked on it back in the late 80s and early 1990s, and developed this process, and it's dried out some of the biggest and oldest buildings in the world over in Europe, and we were able to get the rights to this product here in the United States. What we handle is called rising damp. It's also called capillary action, and it's the worst water problem a old building can have, and it's only because there's been no solution for it. And, and it's the only process that brings salt up into your foundation, and that's the thing that rots the foundation. We've seen it in dozens and dozens and dozens of courthouses, and you have it here, and that's what we handle, and we're the only ones that do, we're the only ones that have this process in the United States.
Is there actually, can you see water?
Yes, now there is, yeah, now that doesn't actually address the water coming in, just the water wicking up now.
Yeah.
Mid-Continental's...
To do the outside, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Was that Mid-Continental?
Mid-Continental would be, you know, that would...
So, what is Mid-Continental looking at, ceiling or putting in drain tile?
Both, I think. I mean, we have drain tile there now, but, you know, with them digging, you know, it may end up destroying that, or it may be destroyed partially already, but...
So, is there a means in here for you to measure what he's done, like a year from now, I mean?
We have that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll tell you how we do that. When we do, when we install, install our product, our senior technician, who was with me the last time we were here, Michael Clancy, he's a big guy than I am, and he'll drill into the masonry about this far, it was in about four inches, the drill's about this big around, so it's not, and we fill that, of course, fill the holes. We drill in, we take samples out of the wall, and we have a device that, again, is a European device, it's a little like an oven, and it weighs, we take the sample out of the wall, we weigh it wet, we dry it, and then we weigh it dry, and that's the percentage of moisture that's in that sample. When we did our inspection, and you see it in report, where I have this little meter that I put up on the wall, that measures the conductivity of the wall. Water is a conductor of electricity. You don't want to be in a lake when there's a lightning storm going because you can get a terrible shock from it. And it measures that conductivity, it measures only this far into the wall, just about half an inch, maybe three quarters of an inch, but it gives us an indication that you've got water in the wall. Any reading that we have that's above 100 on that meter, and there's some pictures of that in, in the report, anything above 100, it's really wet. Anything below 70, it's totally permissible to have that much water. You have to have some water in your wall, you have to have some moisture in your mortar or it'll turn to dust. We don't get rid of every scrap of moisture, but we get it down, back down to the normal level of moisture that it's supposed to be in. And one other thing I'll mention, if you do the outside work that you're considering, which I think is a really good idea, because it does keep the lateral moisture out of the wall for many, many, many years, they put a coating across your masonry on the outside, and if you do do that, we can absolutely guarantee that even the outside walls will be dry with our process. We can absolutely guarantee that. If it's not, then we, we don't stop rain, we don't want to do that, but we do dry out the walls, and once your walls are dry, your outside walls, let's say your outside walls are this thick, and this is the outside right here, the moisture will get into that because it's always in contact with the outside, the rain and the water and that kind of thing. When, when that water comes in and then it quits raining, we dry that whole wall out again. If it's not done, that water stays in the wall like it is today, it'll stay in that wall. The water that we handle comes up underneath the building and brings salt with it. This water coming in the side doesn't bring any salt with it, it's just rainwater, but stuff that comes up under the ground, salt is a naturally occurring substance in, in ground, and the water brings that up, and salt is the devil in these buildings, and it does rot quartzite, limestone, sandstone, concrete, reinforced concrete, anything, we've seen it. We've been asked to do the Capitol building, inspect the Capitol building, which we've done up in Topeka, and they, they got these huge, big limestone blocks that are as tall as this table and as big as your desk, and they go down 30 feet into the ground, that's the foundation of the Capitol. I don't know if you've ever been up there and seen that.
Not a minute.
Oh God, it's amazing. We've never seen anything like it, and they have rising damp in that building. They have salt that's this high up on the wall in some of the places that we saw. We see, we see those limestone blocks caving or going convex into the, into the wall, in other words, they used to be flat, now they're bowed in because of the salt eroding those, that foundation. It's not a good thing, they know it, and we've got a very good chance of drying that building out too. So, the, what we're offering you is going to be a lot cheaper than what you can do the outside with. I'm sure that, that's a very expensive, when you bring in equipment to excavate, that's expensive. We're now, we're about $12,000, $12,300, I think, for you guys. But it's a permanent solution. Once our system is in, it stays there in this courthouse, and it'll keep this courthouse dry for many, many, many decades. The product hasn't been around but just 30 some years, but the original equipment that's been put in over in Europe is still going strong, and the equipment that we have, we think it'll last 80 to 100 years, and as long as that equipment is in your building, rising damp or capillary action from water will not occur again. The salt will not come back again.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So is this work up of 110 to 20, how's it...
It doesn't use any electricity.
Oh, okay.
Let me explain it, because it's a new technology. It's like your cell phone, it's a, it's a new technology. Your cell phone does have a battery that attracts the frequencies that it uses for telephone communication, but it's like your TV antenna that you probably used to have on your roof. Your TV antennas didn't have any electrical connection of any kind whatsoever, you just stuck the antenna up on top of your house, and it attract television waves. I don't know how it does that, it just does. It doesn't attract telephone conversations, it doesn't attract radio waves, it attracts TV waves, because the frequency of television is very different from anything else, and so that television antenna is tuned to television frequencies. I don't know how they do that, people smarter than I am have figured that out. Well, this engineer that developed this process has found that there's a frequency that binds water and masonry together. When you guys were in junior high school or senior high school, I'm sure your science teacher had you do this, or maybe you've done it on your own, you take a brick, just a regular red brick, you stick it in a glass of water and you leave it there for several hours, you will see that the water will go up above the level in the masonry, in the glass, the, the water will be absorbed in that brick and then rise up higher than, than the glass. That's what's going on in your courthouse. It's a natural process. Water comes up through the limestone and, and we have limestone all over the place in Kansas and Minnesota and Iowa and North Dakota, South Dakota, all kinds of limestone, and the water comes up through that and brings salt with it. It gets up into your masonry because there's an attraction between masonry and water, and it climbs up the wall like that. This process that this engineer developed breaks that bond. It's tuned to the frequency that draws water and masonry together. I don't know how he did it, I have any idea, but it works. It's worked in every place that we've put it, and we've got, we started out with no, we started off six years ago now, we had no references of any sort whatsoever. We had some people that took us by our word, and it's worked for them marvelously. Now we've got lists of 25, 30 references, you, you guys got a bunch of references to call, I don't know if you did that or not.
Haven't got a call.
Okay, well, you can call them.
Yeah.
And every one of them will say, yeah, we don't know how it works, but boy, it sure works, it's drying out our courthouse.
So you say you've been using it in Europe for quite a while?
Yes, since 1990. The process was actually perfected in 1990.
Now this, excuse me, it's a estimate, not a bid?
Yes, it's going to be our price.
Okay.
So I'm sure it's cheaper than what...
I'm sure.
I know that they, they do a lot of stuff that's pretty expensive.
Do you have a recommendation, David?
Well, I think that, I mean, one thing I might throw out there, that they did, Mid-Continental did say, I think it was in Abay in Vernon County, it did do both, I mean, they had Mid-Continental come in and do their thing, and then they also had... I guess they're satisfied with the talk.
Yeah. You say Vernon County did it?
Yeah, Vernon County's got it, you know the people over there?
No, I don't, I don't know anybody, no.
Joe Harden is the presiding commissioner over there, and we have Pope County over there, we have Barton County over there, they're new, so they, they've had our equipment in Barton County for probably four months, maybe five months, something like that.
So, about, talk about, put it on the agenda for next week. You all right with that, guys?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to make a few phone calls.
Very good.
Discuss to get in next week, and we're going to call Vernon County.
Fantastic, that would be great, and, and the other references that you got there, I have a copy right here. You have those, I think they're with, with...
I didn't see any.
Yeah, John Anderson up in, no, and Wappin' in North Dakota, Joe, and Steve Ewing, and we, in, in Pipestone, he's the first guy, he was our first customer, and... If you don't have that, guys, I'll, I'll get you a copy. Yeah, yeah, and you can make a copy if you got it. Yeah, I've got one. And at Pipestone, we just finished the, we do an inspection, oh, to get back to your, Jim, to get back to your question at the beginning of this, about checking it. So we do take core samples when we do our installation. Then we come back in a year from now, no other cost, the only cost is what you've got here, and we do another, we take other core samples, again, the same area, and we weigh them, and we compare them with what we did originally versus what we did today. Sometimes the water, the, the amount of water in those things on, on the first year is higher than what it started out at, we used to go in the world, but the, once, once the bond between water and masonry breaks, the water just goes back down the wall through the capillary system. They got holes in there, limestone's pores, and goes back down through the holes in the capillary, in the capillary, and gets, goes back down into the ground, so the water that's up here will drain down here, and sometimes the lower holes that we drilled and took samples out of, it's got more water in it, shows it's coming down the wall. We had to learn that the hard way, but that's, that's what happens, and...
Shouldn't we say in three years, no water?
In three years, we guarantee that the building will be dry, or we refund 80% of the money that you put into this. We've never had to do that, and to my knowledge, they've never had to do it in Europe.
Yeah.
So, that's how we operate.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Get us a list for this.
Thanks for seeing me again, I appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, bye.
I was doing a little research here.
I think it looks like I'm up, so, looks like I'm up.
Yeah.
Like request an executive session, KSA 75-4315B1, to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy and production. Three commissioners, Susan and the county counselor, for 10 minutes, please.
Mr. O'Hare, it's just, it's job performance, Greg.
Oh, I'm sorry, job performance, I call it production. That's construction terms.
Come back at 9:38?
Yeah, 9:38.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did you already bring it back?
Not yet. Make a motion to resume normal session at nine thirty-eight.
Your second?
No action.
Second.
Any discussion, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We have this list, are you going to call some of them or there's no reason both of us to call or all three of us calling these guys?
What's that?
References for the
Doesn't matter, whoever wants to.
Courthouse.
Anybody want to?
Nope.
I can.
Yeah, we need a motion to do that or just do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Here we go.
Assigned task. All right. Hang in.
Thank you.
Kind of repeat from last week and I told Mr. Harris earlier that I'll probably be here until I know that all this is taken care of. Sorry, guys. I'm here today to ask if the significant deficiencies in the two thousand and twenty audit are being taken care of. Last week, you assured me that the landfill buildings had all been sent, but that there were still payments to be received. During the county council comments, Mr. Meeks reported that there had been a problem with the day-to-day operations, a billing practice concerning a landfill issue and that had been resolved, that it needed tweaking. To be honest, I was a little concerned to hear this, especially after you telling me that all the issues had been taken care of. What assurances can you give that this billing issue won't happen again? This is a department under your control. It still concerns me that approximately a hundred thousand of the billings were not sent out until late two thousand and twenty and the county hasn't received all payments due to the county. It especially concerns me because departments come in every year at budget time, if not before, asking for more and more money and yet some departments can't seem to bill customers in a timely fashion. It seems to me that in order for a department to run efficiently, that it would be vital to know how much money they have. Has the reconciliation of the tax rolls been completed? Documentation kept showing that the tax roll has been reconciled and all related reports printed off. Whose responsibility is it to see that the quarterly financial statements have been published? Have any been published this year? When is the next time they should be published? Has the Department of Corrections made changes so that there is more than one person overseeing the deposit of inmate funds? Has the county attorney's office made changes so that diversion funds deposits are overseen by more than one person? These two, the last two, seem small, but they have been happening for four years and so it would be ridiculous for these two items to be the thing that would cause the federal government to say that the county can no longer receive money from them, the federal government, through grants and that kind of thing. However, it does speak to the ability of the county to hire those that do their jobs with excellence. There were four violations to the Kansas statutes. What are the consequences to these violations? You've also stated that the county has now hired a financial director and that it is her job to point out errors and deficiencies. It seems to me that you've given a lot of power to an unelected official who is overseeing this position. The commission has stated that the only control you have over each department is how much money you allow for their budgets. And yet each department head goes into an executive session with you every time they need to hire someone or meet with you about an HR problem. You are all the gatekeepers and in the end, it is you that bears the responsibility if the federal government has to get more actively involved in how the county operates.
I can address the landfill issue, that's your question as far as
Awesome.
billing. We've had a change in personnel
Awesome.
and change in director position.
Yes.
A lot of things that created last year was a lot of people's going through changes and a lot of people changed positions and some things, it wasn't nothing illegal, it just wasn't done. But with the new people on board, with the personnel changes and also the director change, they're on top of the billing of the landfill.
Well, except until Mr. Meeks said that there was a problem.
Yeah, I can address that, it was my new shift, I'll make sure we clarify it. We actually raised the rates on tires that were being brought in.
Yeah.
It was seven cents a pound, we've gone to ten cents a pound. The reason for it is that they found the price of everything's gone up. So the landfill gets charged a hundred and eighty-five dollars a ton and so we were losing money on the tires that were coming in. So they're weighing them by the pound now instead of per tire. So it's ten cents a ton or ten cents a pound. So we can make up the, we're basically going to break even on the tire disposal.
And that's our goal, to break even or not, and also the landfill doesn't receive any tax dollars, so it's not a budget either.
So there wasn't really a billing issue, it was the fact that we weren't charging enough?
Right.
Right.
And the reason I didn't bring that up.
Things went up.
Right, and the reason I didn't bring that up is we didn't need to.
The landfill itself doesn't make money. The C and D does.
So, no landfill in the whole of the United States makes money?
No, that's not what we're saying. We're saying we're providing a service and that service
Okay.
is not tax-funded. And from C and D and trash. The trash service does not make money.
Oh, I want to, Ms. Dare made a comment that we need to talk about and quite an extensive view and kind of give a little history here. Mr. Harris was involved in this, Commissioner O'Hare was involved in this too. We actually, years ago, looked at actually selling the transfer station to make, to make money. Obviously, it's a tax-funded service that we had long conversations about with regards to how it processed. And so, the actual transfer station itself does not make money. It's a break even. If we actually made money like some other disposal services within the region, we would not be charging what we charge now.
Right, pay more.
Yeah, the C and D does make money, but not a whole lot. But once again, it's a service. We've had, you know, couches in the ditches. You know, the tires are an issue because we don't want tires in our ditches and that just causes road and bridge to go out and pick that stuff up. So when we looked at the landfill to actually sell it, the cost of doing business was going to go up substantially. And we, it has value. We had independent appraisal done when Mr. Harris was the road and bridge director. That independent appraisal came back, I mean, over a million to sell it. But when we did the math, it made sense for Birmingham County is to have that service so that we wouldn't have stuff in our ditches and that it wouldn't cost a arm and a leg. So it's like anything else, a golf course, an airport. It is a service that our goal is to break even. If it makes a little extra money, that's great, but if it does, it goes into equipment because we don't really have the equipment fund built in.
And it does make money off the C and D side of the landfill.
But, but that
Construction, so, and that's the only way that it can be self-funded.
Right, but the C and D money almost always goes, ends up going to equipment.
It does.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, but what's the C and D?
That's construction and demolition.
Ah, I got it, okay.
We bury that in the ground.
Yep.
If you get a few light loads going to the Iowa landfill, the C and D profit helps pay for the logs and the building.
And it's a fine, it's a fine line on the trash service because we can't raise the rates where we're not competitive with the surrounding landfills.
Well, and we
Because of the cost it takes to, to, to transport the trash to the landfills.
We are, we are losing, because of our rates, we are losing business to other in-the-ground service providers. And because, you know, the difference between us and someone that's really close is they actually put it in the ground. We don't, we transfer it. So when fuel costs go up, it creates a margin, our margins tighten up. So like right now, three dollars a gallon, we are pretty much lucky to have the C and D.
Yeah, our solid waste, it costs, if we can just break even on it to transfer it.
Well, sometimes we lose money on it, but the C and D covers it.
C and D covers it.
Okay, okay.
Right.
Okay.
And with that, we've experienced it when the rates went up a little bit. We ended up with lots of couches and mattresses and trash in the ditches.
Our goal is to maintain the ditches clean and offer service to the citizens at a decent rate.
Affordable.
Affordable.
So, and then going on down the line a little bit. Susan is working to make sure some of the items are being corrected from the treasurer's office. Just kind of an update, working with the treasurer's office.
And also at, working with Susan and going to work with Patty all the department is. I really looked in January, it looked really well with her help. Yeah, it's going to be a different place.
Okay.
I can give a little bit of an update.
That would be awesome. I was off on vacation last week. However, I went ahead and printed everything from January to the end of September to kind of start doing a review of the trial balance. And there are several journal entries that we need to make. And some of those, some of those things are coding errors, some are, the auditor would like to see bond and interest payments split out. Because right now, what he has to do is go in and make adjusting entries, which at the end of your audit letter, you saw all those journal entries that had to be done. Well, that is because he's breaking out the bond, the principal and interest and any kind of fees. And in our financial statements, we're not showing it that way. So that's all stuff that's going to have to be cleaned up before the end of the year. So that, those are some of the, the major things that we need to, to work with the departments. And your main departments that do that would be like your sheriff's department, public works. I think the county attorney has a bond payment. And so there's, that, that's what we've got to work on. And so that's going to take those conversations with each department head to, to, to do that and new accounts created. The other thing is, is I had spoke with Patty and she had told me that they were pretty much reconciled up through current. So August would be the most recent one that I would think that would be completely finished. And I haven't talked to her since, so, and I could step in there and ask her real quick. But right now, we would be working on September closeout, in a, in a perfect world, to be presented about the middle of October, that should be expected. That should be expected, that there should be some kind of a presentation of financial statements. I'm going to bring how I present our financial statements at the city over to the county and give them an example of this is what we should be doing each period to reconcile cash. If I were to look at a cash statement today for August, we have violations. And so I just kind of want to explain what those violations would be. You cannot spend more than what you have in the bank. And we have a couple of funds that we have done that. And one is a bond payment. And so what is going to have to make up that bond payment until the money comes in? And what happens is, is that's a sewer bond debt that's repaid. Each month, the city is capturing those revenues on the sewer payment, and then we send those over to the county to make the sewer bond payment. Well, the bond payment comes before you have enough money in the bank. So technically, the general fund is making up for this until the end of the year. So that's one thing, that's kind of a problem. The other thing is, is we just closed out a CDBGCV grant, and we're $8,000 in the hole. So I'm going to have to contact the state to find out if we didn't draw those funds down, what was charged there, if that was an error. But that cannot, you can run grants in the hole because it's a reimbursement back, but we closed that grant, so that's a concern. So we're going to have to look into that as well. And then another fund, the EOC upgrade, it's only in the hole $8, but that would need to be transferred to, back to the general fund to cover that expense because I assume that that's a grant that's been closed out. So those are the kind of things that you have to look at at the end of each month to make sure that you don't have any violations. And so that, those are the kind of things I would need to work with the treasurer's office on to make sure that we're doing those things correctly. So, and that's not necessarily in her area. She works with the revenue. So it's a partnership between the treasurer's office, the clerk's office, and myself to make sure that, we're making sure that we're following all the statutes correctly.
So, and one of the things that we're trying to move forward with is monthly reports.
Yeah, monthly reports is almost, it has to happen so that you know that you're tying out your cash. And what it would look like is, we have a fund status report that gives you all your cash balances. We would want that to reconcile back to bank statements. And so basically, there would be a cover sheet that says, here's what my bank balances are. They should total up to be what's on my cash report, plus outstanding checks and outstanding deposits. So it's going to take every account within the county. So it would be the clerk's side, that would be the treasurer's side, for somebody to put that all together and say, yep, it balances, so.
Is that going to be handy, Jim?
That would help you know if you're in balance. So, anyway.
That would help tremendously.
Yeah.
You and I worked together quite a few years trying to figure out where we were at at any given time.
Yeah, and almost every September, we could see four more miles in asphalt, but do we have money or not?
That's right.
And the other, some of the other things that I'm checking is, we get a lot of state payments, and the state gives a printout that shows you exactly what's coming in. And so I take those numbers and I go back to the trial balance and make sure that they have hit the bank in their, in the right fund. So those are, those are just some things that I'm starting to work on and make sure that we're cleaning those up.
Back to landfill just for a second. Back to landfill just for a second.
Okay.
We have a building out there that's bonded. We have a bond that we pay on, on the building, and the payment on that bond is paid through the landfill.
Yes, I think it's almost paid off.
Getting close, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost paid off.
Well, people said we wouldn't be able to do it, didn't they?
Well, we had a group saying, you'll never make it, don't build that building. Here we are, it's almost paid for, and it's a good operation out there.
It is, and before, it was an embarrassment.
And to talk about the issues that we had in 2020 on the landfill is, there was about $100,000 that was not billed out, Lynn. And when Jennifer got on board, that was the very first thing that we attacked, is we got all that billed out, and we are working with, because some of the bills were very large. And so, because it was about six or seven months they hadn't been billed. And so we are working with them to make payments, but most everybody is caught up. I think we only have one that there's an outstanding one on. So, so most of them have caught up, and you can definitely see that in the revenue for this year. It's very inflated, so.
Also, to show you the change in the landfill, when I came back to director in 2013, the second week I met the state and got like 11 citations of violations. We do such a good job out there now, we get zero overall. I mean, every once in a while, it might be a little something, but those folks do a good job, so.
And if anyone goes to the landfill, they'll notice that it's clean.
It's clean.
Yeah.
Yeah, folks go out there and say, I can't believe this is a landfill, it looks so nice.
It does look nice.
But they take pride in their work.
Any other questions that maybe I need to answer?
Couple of questions there, the last two. You're going to either work with Susan or contact the elected officials on the two funds that you were talking, talking about rotating people into.
Which ones were those? Is that the attorney?
MA funds and the diversion funds.
The diversion funds, it's a deficiency that there's only one person overseeing that and no other eyes.
Yeah, and I think, I think what we could do there is just do an annual audit, internal annual audit. And so that's something that maybe I can go view their records and just make sure that everything looks kosher.
Okay.
Because you really, if they don't have enough staff to rotate that position, it becomes a problem.
Well, I don't even think, as it was worded in the letter, that it was rotating in, but just there again, someone else to double check.
Mm-hmm, yeah, 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 just have another set of eyes on it.
Yes, if that's you, then that's you.
Yep, now I'll just have to work with the department heads on that.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks, Susan. County Councilor.
Well, I want to answer a couple of these.
Oh, I'm sorry, Clayton. I'm sorry, Clayton.
Just a few that I marked. How much money we have, the one, two, three, four, about five, fifth one down, Ann. Yeah, completely agree, and we are working on that, as Susan just said, monthly reports. To go on down, however, it does speak to the ability, this is what she wrote. However, it does speak to the ability of the county to hire those that do their jobs with excellence. I would change that to, however, it does speak to the ability of the county to elect those that do their jobs with excellence. We hire, we don't get to hire the sheriff, we don't get to hire the treasurer, we don't get to hire the clerk. Now, do I think they do a good job?
Yeah.
And that's between me and them. But I think, I don't think that's a very fair statement.
Okay.
Because, like I said, that's the county's job to elect those people. Who's overseeing, Susan? We are. This goes to, the commission has stated that the only control you have over each department is how much money, the budget, which is a true statement, and yet each department head goes into an executive session with you to hire and so forth. I agree with you. Why are we doing that? It's not my job to hire a sheriff's deputy. It's not my job to hire somebody to work for Patty. It's not my job to hire Ashley's people. That's their job. From this, I don't know why it's been that way in the past, but that, when I first came, that really irritated me that, I'll pick on, I'm going to pick on, I'm going to pick on Ashley since she's here, I'm not done, Lynn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to pick on Ashley since she's here. If Ashley comes to me and says, well, I need you to help, I need you to hire somebody for me, no. She's the clerk, it's her job. But that has happened, not with Ashley, but you're here, so, not with Ashley. But that has happened with some departments. They have come and said, well, we need to hire this person that's going to executive session. No, why that's been done in the past is beyond me. If Justin can provide a state legal reason for that, okay. But it's not my job. I did not run for sheriff, I did not run for treasurer, I didn't run for the clerk.
The executive sessions that we've done in the past that I'm aware of have usually done with job performance. I know that one elected official's gone in for that, but usually you do hire two directors, your county appraiser and your road and bridge director. And so anything that deals with, or actually another, you know, your maintenance personnel stuff like that at the hospital. So there are some director positions that you guys are actually responsible for. And so the executive sessions that we've gone in.
Not what I'm talking about.
I know, but it's, but the broad, the broad statement was, you guys are responsible for hiring people, but you are. I mean, actually, the, one of the big part of your employees actually are hired by you guys by hiring your directors because your biggest employer within the organization is your road and bridge. And so that person is not an elected official, and so when you talk about performance issues with those specific people, you have to go into executive session. An elected official has to go into an executive session if they're talking about their specific employee and their personnel or their job performance, which has actually happened in one of our elected officials' positions. There's actually, if there's a, let's just hypothetically say there's a sexual harassment complaint or hostile work environment, something like that, you have to go into, you have to go into.
I would say that some of the ones that we have went into had nothing to do with sexual assault or anything, that any reason to go into executive session, in my opinion.
Job performance, we've talked about job performance. I mean, if there's a violation.
Talking about elected officials.
Yeah, if there's a violation in the Kansas Open Meeting Act, we need to report it.
My point is, Ann, is elected officials need to do their own job.
Well, that's what I would agree, I hear what you're saying. But if it's someone in another department, why are these guys going in to help with an HR issue in a different department?
So, we're just giving an example, we have somebody come in and says, you know, I want to add a person. You know, I don't care if they add a person as long as it's in their budget. But if we're going to break the budget, they need, we need to know. You know, and if they go in, they're talking about the employees' work because they don't have this employee, then we need to, we need to be able to discuss that.
Let's use, I want to go back to Commissioner Beth's statement because it's important to clarify this.
Right.
So, you know, we went into executive session recently on something that was happening in the appraiser's office. We had to go into executive session for that. There was no way of n's or b's. You're talking about specific people, their job performance, and what they were going to get paid and how they were going to do their jobs.
Again, not what I'm talking about.
I know, but I, but what I'm worried about, Commissioner Beth, is you've actually are reporting a coma violation. So I need to clarify that because if we need to, we need to report that to the state of Kansas, we need to do that. Because I, I'm trying to, because you just said we've potentially violated coma, so I need to make sure that we clarify that.
That's my personal opinion.
But.
The most recent one we went into, it was for an addition of a person, and they were discussing personnel in the, in the office and what it was doing to their organization.
Well, since, since.
And we, and I think when we come out, you know, said if you have the money in your budget.
There's one executive session I wasn't part of that had an elected official in it, that a personnel was discussed. If there, if we feel like there was a coma violation, we need to report it.
Okay, that, I'm not, that's not what I'm talking about at all.
I know, I understand, but I'm.
I'm not talking about coma violations or anything else. I misspoke.
Right.
I'm talking about, I didn't, I didn't run to be sheriff, I didn't run to be clerk, I didn't run to be treasurer. It's not my job to hire their people, that's their job.
Yeah, I totally, totally agree with that.
I totally agree with that, too.
I'd like, I'll just call it, I agree with what Clayton said. If an elected official wants to add staff, my only request is that they meet with Susan and make sure that they can do it budget-wise.
And, and yeah, I can see that, but it just seems like, of course, I don't know everything that happens at the executive session, know very little, but it appears that when an elected official goes in with you sometimes, and I know that they are seeking to hire someone, that it's the assumption, good or bad, that you're helping them oversee hiring someone for their department, and if that's, you know.
That's not necessary.
That's not necessary.
No.
It's not the case at all.
No, I haven't done that, no, no.
Okay.
I've seen more of that right here, not in executive session. Seen more of them coming to this podium and blaming us for their downfalls. And that's what I'm talking about. I'm sick and tired of being blamed by elected officials for their problems.
And a lot of times, when an elected official asks for an executive session, a lot of times I think it's based on performance. They've got issues in their, in their department, they don't, they don't know how to handle. And honestly, that places liability on the county, and these folks need to be involved when it, when there's any kind of liability involved. That's the main thing I think we need to.
True.
Yeah, we haven't had an instructor in here forever.
Right.
We're working on it.
Sorry, Clayton. So that answers the question. And I'll agree 100% that elected officials need to take care of their own departments. That is, that if it's budgeted, they have the authority to do it. You know, I've promoted for years now that these elected officials on their pay. Why don't you go to a progressive wage scale? Start, start at an entry level and work your way up.
We did that in public.
Why do we do that in public works, and it works out well?
Works great, works great, so.
You know, they're promoted into positions that, that they demonstrate that they can handle those positions, and they go from $13 an hour up to $17 an hour.
Public Works has four maintenance grades, and you have, you start here and you can work your way up according to what job performance function you do as well, and it's up to the director to move those folks up in wage scales. So there's opportunities there that other departments have never done what Lynn asked. And I did years ago with his help, we put them in stage steps, and it works great.
Wasn't an easy task, but we got it done.
Got it done, and there's no reason, these unelected officials don't do it.
You know, and I've heard the word equity used. This is not, conservatives don't use the word equity. You know, in the business, and I know, I know Clayton's the same way. He didn't start out at the top on his pay scale. I never did either. Any job that I had, I started at the bottom and worked my way up. And that's, and the same way was when I come back and started a business in carpentry. I didn't start out at $30 an hour, you know, I was a new guy. Get me off my bandwagon.
There you go. How about a five-minute break?
Huh?
How about a five-minute break?
Okay, let's take a break.
Those cool water on some break.
They tore the tacos out. Tore them off. But I said, you know what, she cooks so good, you could go out and stay there. And eat out there. Because I'm done eating. A little even? I went in there and I cut it all raw, and I was like, what the, do I not get to eat tonight? I'm sorry. It's Austin. Like, how many is that? And I looked, and he had like four tacos on his plate, I'm like, is that your second plate? You know? Four tacos? The other one, I had three. Oh my gosh, where are you putting all? Yeah. Yeah, they haven't ate the, that's great to pull it out. So anyway, when you wake up and there's three boys sitting there, no, that's what they're doing.
I said we did play well. I said we did play well.
No, we didn't, and there was one call that was, that got my attention. And you've heard me at Landville, but, so we, they fumbled the ball, it was fourth down. And they ran the ball, they fumbled it, and the ball fumbled five yards forward, and when they recovered it for a first down, we can't do that, we can't fumble for a first down. And so it should have been back to where they were, it was back where they fumbled the ball. Instead, they gave it to them where the fumble was recovered, and it was first down, which allowed them to score a touchdown. So if we would have got the ball over there and would get back, we probably would have beaten them, but they ended up winning, they took points.
That's a problem, most schools, I see it here, we use local referees.
Yeah, these guys, I don't know where they're from.
They say that, I'm showing preference. This high school is from a pool.
In Missouri, they're paying $120 a game plus traffic mileage because they can't get people to referee. You think about it, $120 a game, you do a middle school game, JV game, and a high school game, you know, three, six, three plus mileage a week.
Wrestling.
Well, yeah, but I'm just talking football.
Right.
So that's three, sixteen.
My age is fifty-five.
I've done it. I've done all that. I've done this.
I'm officiating, not that. I've been a coach and officiating. I don't bow about it.
The patch the patch on your shoulder gave everybody their idea.
So Clifton said he didn't get a chance to.
Public comment.
Public comments. And Clifton gets back.
Susan, you said he was on vacation last week, but then you said, I printed all this stuff out.
I know.
How's that vacation?
I worked. I I can't help myself.
Okay, we're off break. Clifton said he didn't get a chance to public comment. So back up a little bit and let Clifton do his public comment.
The only comment I'm going to make is, and I'm not pointing fingers at different directors or elected officials, I'm just saying this, that when a person gets a grant, and that that's that's a good thing, you know, like the bridge grant and stuff like that, and different ones get grants for new employees, some of the questions that commissioners might have missed and they may come back and ask for later is, okay, we got permission to hire a couple of new employees for a grant, and we we can use like the Merton Schumanian. He gets nice grants and stuff. And so he's able to afford his vehicles. He's not coming to you and saying, hey, I I got this grant, but now you need to pay for a vehicle for my guy. Or like the treasurer's office, or not treasurer, the appraiser's office, same way. They come to you and say, well, I was able to afford in my budget. Here's the key in my budget. I'm able to afford this. And I'm able to afford all our equipment and everything and vehicles and everything else. And I'm saying that's when and and a lot of the grants have to come to you to be signed off on. And some of them don't. And and that's that's okay. But if they're accepting these grants, just make sure if they're adding people, that all of a sudden they don't come back and ask for more vehicles or other stuff, equipment that goes with them.
Does all grants have to be approved by us, Susan?
Thank you.
They should be.
They should be. They are going to Susan.
That's what I thought. Yeah, okay.
In fact, I'd ask Susan for the latest to to get a copy of the original grant application and the approval.
Yeah, and I'll I'll get with Bill on that to to get that information.
And I know we were told that it wouldn't cost any taxpayer money. Well, we have to make sure that that's the case.
We'll have to look at how the grant was written.
Thirty-five percent for employee benefits, plus training, plus vehicles, plus gas. You know, that's all all goes into the budget for for that grant. So we'll we'll figure that out.
The other thing that I I didn't get to mention, when I'm putting together all your department rates and stuff like that, you're asking for employee stuff, I think what one thing that would help is if we have something in writing that we can hand back to the employee and that's considering leaving the county and say, you know, I understand you're moving to another place for $2 more an hour. But do you realize the benefits and how much value they bring to you and your family? Because I think if you can put that in an hourly rate form, that that may make they may make or break a decision because really the benefits are pretty rich here.
We might consider taking that a step farther, not waiting until they're getting ready to leave us.
Yes.
Maybe we could put in their checks every quarter or something to make them aware of, hey, yeah, I'm looking for a job, but this is what I'm getting on the benefits. Maybe I shouldn't be looking.
Ashley, do you know if CIC does a comp statement?
There's in like the year end process, there is something because that's where I can look to see.
Okay.
How much of which really costs the benefits and everything.
Yeah, I'm thinking at the end of the year, when we do their W2s, we stick that comp statement in there. And that will help them understand all the value that they're getting from the county.
The monthly reports reflected how much per department each employee was received off of.
And I'm sure it shows on their pay stub, too. But until you really put it in front of them and say, hey, look, look what you're getting from us.
I think Justin and I talked about that, and he's made mention of that before, that that we need to actually go with budget. That ought to be part of the budget process.
Yeah. Well, and even I don't know very many places that you get eight percent, almost nine percent into your 401K. And that's what goes into your capers. So, you know, that's that's from the employer. And then the employee also puts in. So there's a lot of things that need to be kind of brought to light for an individual.
And you don't find remaining companies that contribute what we do towards the family plan insurance.
Yeah, family plan and also vacation and holidays.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Right. All right. Susan, it's your turn.
I'm done. That's all I have.
Oh, well, I've got something.
You skipped Justin.
Oh, I'm sorry. You you're an afterthought.
I know, I understand.
It was no accident.
I got two things that I reported. I have three things.
So while Susan was here, I needed to give her the it's for insurance.
You ever got one? Susan? You ever got one?
Pardon?
You should know where you sit, right? Hey, that's you know, being an afterthought is a good thing with the job that I do.
He gives us a headache, so.
It says, in closure, we'll find a quote for Bourbon County's work comp policy. This is from Atkins Insurance. We were unable to obtain a quote for the property and liability as we did not receive all the information that we requested from the Sheriff's Department and some of the cyber liability information. I would like to say that Kendall Mason and the Clerk's Office have been excellent to work with. So they were not able to quote your liability. So you really truly only have one one bid on liability. And then their work comp was almost double what K Works was. So but I'll go back and I'll I'll compare and then bring a recommendation next week.
Thank you.
So. Sorry. That keeps getting me. You you move your spot too much.
It's all right. I've got a couple of things we need to talk about. First off, I need permission for Mr. Harrington and I to start working on the potential of a fire station or additional fire hydrants in the western Fort Scott City limits west, basically to pass the airport. There are some construction projects that are going on out there that are substantial. And and we'd like to get the insurance rates down. And we need fire hydrants and possibly a new fire station. So we understand that it's a lot of work. It's been talked about before. But we need to move forward and handle that situation to see what we can do to do our due diligence. So I'll help with the legal part. Rob will help with the any grant funding or anything we can get at the state and federal level. And then also, if we have to have, you know, community involvement, which we will, we'll work with them to move the process forward. So we'll need the help from the city, from lake residents, people that live around the golf course. You know, I don't can't remember for life, and I can't remember that road, but Justice Lane, and then the road that runs north and south there.
Two hundred and fifth.
Two hundred and fifth, thank you. Two hundred and fifth street.
Will that be a new district or will it be part of another?
Part of another district.
Okay.
But just an expansion because there's a lot happening out there. And it's great stuff. We're just there's a bunch of homes that are being built. And what's happened at the lake is awesome. But we need to start doing some infrastructure improvements out there.
Yeah.
And not to bring up water pressure. Not going to bring that up. So.
I think it's great because you're aware that I've had some residents contact me for fire protection. So that's great.
Yep. But I need to vote to have that ability to do that with Mr. Harrington. And I'd actually have one of the commissioners probably to help us with that, too, would be awesome. But I'm not putting any more work on your guys' shoulders. I know.
I'll help you. But not these guys.
So this could be a new fire district?
No.
Is this expansion? Are you working with?
We would like we'd like to work with an existing fire district. We're not I mean, this is a preliminary. This is the starting point. We're not asking anybody to do anything else except for Rob and I just doing some due diligence to see what we can get. I mean, obviously, if it's $5 million to put, I'm being funny, but if it's some crazy number to put fire hydrants out there, then we'll come back to the board and say, look, it costs X, Y, and Z. But we got to work with.
So what about fire hydrants in the rest of the county?
Well, just on that road, 205th Street, there's a lot of houses that are I mean, we could we could look at all the rest of the county, too.
I mean?
Yeah, we're just we can do that. We'll look at countywide if we can. We're just trying to start at a starting point. It's in the county.
Bring it.
And there has been a fire station talked about by the airport at one point in the and at the lake. Board has talked about it, too. So just to kind of take the next step.
I entertain motion to allow Justin and Robert to work on on a fact finding for a possible fire hydrant project or fire station project in west of Fort Scott and possibly Bourbon County.
I'll make a motion to allow County Council, Justin, make with the ready, Rob Harrington, and the possibility of one commissioner to do a feasibility study and move forward with the possible fire station and increase in some water line size in some areas of construction and fire hydrant protection, just as a feasibility moving forward.
So we're not talking about county funds?
No, no, no. Or city funds, for that matter. We're just we're just going to look at, you know, what it looks like to have some maybe donations or federal funding or state funding to expand fire protection.
Include if they need a commissioner involved. I'll be more glad to volunteer because I do know water lines, etc. But if anybody else wants to do it, that's okay, too.
I think my place is pretty full.
Fire protection throughout the county. Yeah, fire protection throughout the county.
I amend the motion for fire protection throughout the county.
There you go.
For a second. So it's just going to be steady?
Well, you can second it.
Huh?
You can second it.
I'll second it. Any discretion?
Yeah, I think at the start, it wasn't included for the entire county. I just think it's not fair to include one little section of this county. I have that's been one thing that's irritated me about this county and this city for years is that we try to help one certain person instead of the entire group. And I just think it needs to be the entire county and not one set of individuals.
I think that's a good statement. I really do. If you if you look at our fire districts as they are today, the fire districts we are talking about are volunteer. And it's very difficult to get volunteer. And I live in there, and I'm sure Clifton does, too, where if somebody called to put a fire out in my house, I would be fighting tooth and nail for them to leave it alone because there wouldn't be anything to salvage by the time I got there.
Why why are their insurance rates more important than mine?
Well, I mean, so the Pandora's Box has gotten up. We haven't had a good banter in a while. So I'll go down the I'll go down the rabbit hole.
Okay.
And I didn't mean to open up the Pandora's Box, but I will. So, you know, we've we've had conversations about paved roads. And I'm going to start there because it's a good starting point for the conversation going forward. So data drives decisions, in my opinion. You can disagree with that statement, but on my end, data always drives should drive decision making. And so everyone pays taxes. I completely understand that. But to put a fire hydrant out in northwestern Bourbon County for one house is not as cost effective for putting a fire hydrant in a housing development that has 20 houses and seven of them are half a million dollar homes. So there is a difference, in my opinion, about data that shows where costs, you know, the best bang for your buck. You know, the fire district came up because of what's happening in that area. There's a basically explosion of housing rates for the price of a property, price of a lot. And then there's also new construction that's happening along 205th Street. I think there was actually an email sent by a patron that is looking to help with those rates. When you build a half a million dollar home, your insurance rates are going to be higher if you don't have, you know, good fire protection. So it's just a part of, you know, the conversation we've had for years now, trying to get our base expanded so we can have more property taxes and more people moving here. And if there's going to be possible expansion at the lake with additional lots being sold, I mean, I noticed one's up for auction coming up. And there's another three lots that are going to be for sale. Well, if they open another 10 of them, you know, we I would love for 20 houses to be built up by Fulton so we can expand the fire district. But there's not 20 houses being built there right now. There's potentially seven or eight that are being built on the lake area. And then along 205th Street, there's at least two that I'm aware of. So I I understand that the county, everybody's important. We've always said that. But it's data driven. You know, if you have 5,000 people driving down a road a day, and you have 100 driving down a road a day, that road that has 5,000 people on it, I think precedent should set that road should be looked at first before the 100. And I get the 100 people. That road's very important, and it should be looked at. But there's safety issues. There's traffic counts. There's I mean, it goes on and on. So where the housing developments are, if Redfield had 20 houses built, I would absolutely be saying the same thing, that we need to look at that area to have fire expansion, too. So I mean, I was I'm just the county council trying to help. You know, I have some administrative responsibilities given to other people, which I'm very grateful for. But this, to me, is a liability issue on some levels and also just trying to make our community grow so we have a better base. I will look at putting fire hydrants all over the county if I can. But I know just common sense would say that fire expansion for fire hydrants in, you know, a certain area of the county is not going to be cost effective, and we're not going to get a lot of bang for our buck. So that's why. I mean, I'd love to have another fire station up in northwestern Bourbon County, but we're not going to get the volunteers. And the other thing that's been talked about is having, you know, actually paying firefighters in our rural areas because of the lack of volunteers. That's come up, too. So I think the districts that we have and the volunteers that we have and what they've done is awesome. But what's happening nationally is that we don't have people to be part of Rotary, part of Kiwanis, be part of these volunteer systems. So we have to start looking at what it looks like, you know, five or 10 years from now. This is just a starting point. And I'll I'm at the total discretion of the commission, but.
One of the things that that kind of comes to mind in my past life was I moved into a brand new housing development in in Midlothian, Texas, new house. It was up to the contractor that is that that developed the the housing development to provide fire hydrants for the whole development. So there, you know, it was one of those things, well, you know, you know, you're going to put all you're going to put all this money into to these developments.
Pandora's Box again, yeah. But there's Pandora's Box again. Developers are controlled by code and zoning. So if you build, if you want a fire district or a fire hydrant put out in the county, you would have to mandate some type of code to.
Well, I think I think this one was was part of a part of the the agreement with the developer that that to have fire service, you had to have it there.
Right. Well, let's let's talk about Indian Road because that's a an interesting conversation. So let's say an apartment complex or some time shares or not time shares condos. Think about townhomes is what I was thinking about. Gets built on Indian Road. There's no code. There's no zone zoning. I mean, they have to abide by state regulations. But, you know, there's no code with regards to a school being built or a multi-function house or anything of that nature. The infrastructure itself would be provided by the contractor to base levels and go on down the road. So, you know, it once you start that conversation, you start a bigger picture overview of what has to happen legally for those types of controls we put in place. So there's always a starting point. You know, if if population moves to the north, if something happened, like, let's say, on Poplar, fire would be a would be an issue.
You know, my you know, my feelings on zoning.
I understand.
Because I'm a staunch property rights supporter, period.
Our closest fire station to the north is in Fulton. I don't know if it's active.
Fire hydrants, I just looked it up. Fire hydrants aren't really very expensive.
Right, I understand.
So.
But you had you had 20 of them at, let's say, 1,000 each or five, you know, 1,200 each, you're talking about big. And the fire hydrants can be cheap. It's the line that gets the water to the fire hydrant.
Right, you don't have big enough lines in real fire districts to support them.
But let's not talk about water pressure.
Interesting conversation.
Yep. So I mean, I, once again, I'm just. So I mean, I, once again, I'm just being the messenger, so I'll do whatever I'm instructed to do. I won't do anything if you tell me to, that's.
Well, I don't care, I mean, personally, I don't care if you go out there and, you know, and did investigation on, you know, what it would take, but you know, the county itself has not got a dog to fight, really.
That's, that's kind of my point. I didn't wanna, I use that term too much, but the county, really, I mean, besides allowing us to maybe use the right of ways, there wouldn't be really a lot, a lot for the county to do.
So why are we voting on it, then?
'Cause I need to be, I'm, I guess I can do, I guess I can do it as a private citizen, but I'd be a little afraid of doing that.
Why don't we have a problem with you doing it?
I think we need to look at projects like this all over the county if we're gonna encourage development.
Well, I think it's part of the economic development.
Yeah.
That's why Mr. Harrington's involved.
Part of the plan.
Right. Without, without infrastructure, you're not gonna have the ability to have developments.
Right.
So you know, in my, in my world, a fire hydrant's not really feasible because I don't even have real water.
Yeah, but, you know, there's a possibility if I'm gonna build a half a million dollar home on Indian Road, one of my questions is gonna be fire protection, so.
Well, there are already some really nice, I mean, I hate, I don't wanna bring the city to this, but you know, Indian Road has a, a big sewer line that runs basically east and west on that road, and the county doesn't have any zoning codes, so it gets interesting. I mean, you have the state regulations about septic systems and holding tanks and things like that, but if you want a multifamily, multi-use type of development to happen on Indian Road and 69 Highway, you got some infrastructure problems, and so that's something that we need to look at long-term to develop the corridor. I'm making that up, I'm not any direction from the city, but if 69 Highway becomes something where some development happens, you know, you're gonna have to start looking at fire, fire systems, fire protection, things of that nature, or, you know, I don't wanna mention this either, 'cause once again, it's just banter, public comments, I don't, you know, but if the city would incorporate moving south, it changes things, too, because they have their own guidelines and regs with sewer and water and things like that, and then the city of Fort Scott would have to cover their fire. I mean, they could incorporate all the way out to the lake if they wanted to.
Sure, good.
And then that, we wouldn't have to have any conversations about additional fire service because the, the fire would be protected or the people would be protected by the city of Fort Scott, so I mean, it's just.
If you're going after a grant, the only thing that I would add to that is when you're going out for grant, those are definitely data-driven, too. So if you're seeing a lot of expansion, you're gonna be more likely to get a grant in those areas where there's, where there is growth.
And I, and I completely, I, I mean, I completely understand where Commissioner Beth is coming from. I mean, we gotta make sure we cover everybody, it's just a matter of, and I agree with Commissioner Beth, I just, it's just a part, it's a starting point, just like everything else, we've always had a place where we gotta start, so.
I have to give, give a lot of, a lot of credibility to our volunteer fire departments because they do a phenomenal job on, on, on the services they provide, you know? These guys go out there and, and are fighting fires in fields. They're out there fighting fires in houses and barns and hay bales, you know, so, so they're doing a phenomenal job, but it's very difficult for them to keep staff on a volunteer labor level.
Well, it's happening nationally, you know, volunteers have, it's happening all over. I mean, people that have a lot of time on task and they have things that are outside of that bailiwick with volunteerism, so, I mean, we're seeing it everywhere. I mean, it's just tough. I mean, you have, we have kids and soccer games and flag football and social media and video games and, I mean, I'm not saying, I mean, and that's, you know, lifestyle choice, whatever, I mean, it's just people don't have the time that they did back in the day, and there is less volunteers, there's no doubt about that, so.
Agreed.
And I'll make sure I watch my words, Commissioner Beth, I'll be more, I'll clarify.
More, more inclusive.
I'll be more inclusive.
Oh, okay. Back this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
The second request is an issue with the NRP. We have a countywide NRP, the city of Fort Scott, at this point, does not, so we need to work with Mr. Harrington to make a countywide NRP. It's, there's a couple of projects that I'm aware of that are actually being delayed because of the lack of NRP within the city. I'll have to, I'll have, with your permission, I'll have to contact the Attorney General's office to see if we can amend our NRP to make it countywide. I'm not gonna go down the rabbit hole of why it wasn't countywide before, but it needs to be countywide NRP, and so we need to work on that with Mr. Harrington and myself, and there would be a, it already is covering all the municipalities except Fort Scott with our current NRP, so it was very inclusive before, except for the city, and we'd have to change ours where it would really change our NRP would be the historical district in downtown, you know, in Fort Scott. They have a 15-year refund on those properties that are rehabbed, so.
Do we need a motion for that? I thought it was already happened.
Well, no, I, I need a motion to change our NRP.
To proceed with that one.
Well, and here's a, just a quick, clarify this up on an administrative issue. We've given Rob, I think, permission, he's running our NRP now.
Right.
So I don't, he's not really an employee of the county, I guess he can do whatever he wants, but he's got his own legal counsel, too, so if you want me to.
But the other part of that is that, that the county has a lot of involvement in, in the NRP process, whether or not, who handles it.
Well, the county, the county, county appraisers office administers it, so I, you know, once again, to get complete clarity on this, is that Ready is now running your NRP with the administration part coming through one of your directors who the commission's responsible for.
Right.
There's a fee that's associated with the NRP, I think it's $50 per application. It was the same way with the city's NRP, that application process and the administrative part still went through the appraisers office. The only real difference that I see is the 15-year downtown, and you'd have to, instead of the, you know, all the different cemeteries and things and fire districts, you don't only have to worry about the city of Fort Scott, the Fort Scott Community College, and the USD, I can't really think of.
234.
234, USD 234. The NRP has already been approved by them, and that's the thing, I don't know, I don't know legally, I mean, I'm assuming that amendment can, can occur to include or change the NRP, but once again, that has to be approved by someone higher up than us.
So then are you going to, how are you gonna handle the business district in the downtown?
We would just copy the city's, I'm, I'm making assumptions again, but we would just potentially copy the old NRP with the city of Fort Scott and then get it active again.
And it, it is, it extends the period longer, and it's 100%, I think, for any new improvements.
So that the period is 15 years, that's the, and it would still, there's still the baseline, I think with the old NRP with the city, there's still the base, but any improvements would be 100% refund.
I'll make a motion to allow County Counselor to work with Rob to, on the NRP, to figure out how to include the city into ours, therefore, since theirs has lapsed.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, just an invitation, Bourbon County Ready has two presentations coming in the city of Uniontown and the city of Bronson in the coming days. If you guys wanted to attend to that, you'd have to make a motion to allow for all three of you to be in those meetings if you want. I think there's one tonight and then tomorrow night with the city of Bronson, so. But there's gonna be some.
Anybody interested? I'm playing wrong, Ron.
There'll be some checks presented and some really good information happening, so it's good stuff.
I don't know if I'll be able to.
Just in case.
I make a motion to the two presentations, one tonight, Uniontown, one Bronson tomorrow, for all three commissioners to be present at those if possible.
Your second?
Second.
Any discretion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, let me look at here real quick. All right, we're up to elected official comments.
Susan, was you all done? Okay.
Commissioners comments.
I guess I need to clarify a statement I made earlier. So I was not self-reporting a coma violation. What I was doing was trying to make a point. As far as I'm aware, actually, I believe that we have not may have had a coma violation on any executive sessions I have been on since I became a commissioner. It is my opinion, though, that some of those, although legal under state laws, were not warranted. Is that fair to say? So I'm trying to clarify my, my coma statement earlier, or whatever, or my lack thereof, that I said of the executive sessions I have been in on, I am, they've all been legal under state law, although I don't necessarily, my opinion is that they were all necessary.
Well, you, you've, you've actually stepped on another banter that we've had a couple of times over the years, and I, I actually totally, absolutely agree with you on this.
So, no, I'm just trying to clarify that I wasn't.
Yeah, no, but I want to, it's important, 'cause what you've done is you've started something, too, that, it's a good day for Commissioner Beth and I. So years ago, and actually with Commissioner O'Hare and the last commission, we talked about giving budget authority or a budget amount to an elected official and let them spend it how they see fit. And when I, when I say that is, is that budget authority is X, and then they can give raises to Y to match X, or to hire whoever they want at whatever rate they want, as long as they stay within the budget. The problem we've run into is that some elected officials don't stay within their budget, and so what, what happened with that scenario is, is that if, if someone goes outside of their budget, then you have major problems trying to make that money up. So there's a real yin and yang there. I mean, giving them the budget authority, and then if they go overtime or a natural disaster happens, or snowplows have to be out for a week because we have a mega snowstorm, things get cumbersome with the budget, so I'm all for giving elected officials.
But, but, but since we're bantering, the problem is, is that we do that currently with our, with the directors we control.
Right.
We don't allow them to have any overtime currently, but we can't do the same thing with our elected officials, so they're gonna go over budget anyway.
Well, yes, and so that's happened.
So, no, it hasn't, it's happened every year for the last eight with one.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, let's just, let's, you lay it out there.
Okay, so let's lay it out there. So let's, let's say we give that, that elected official.
I mean, I guess, and I'm tired of being blamed for it.
Right. Let's get that elected, let's just say that, let's just say a elected official has a budget and they give everybody a $4 an hour raise because they believe they can do it within their budget, and then they go over budget. That's where the commission gets put in a really bad spot, because then you are responsible to make up for that budget shortfall, so.
And we've had it this year.
And so how do we control that, though? 'Cause we can control it with our Rowan Bridge, for instance.
I have made this comment before and I'll make it again, the fine citizens of Bourbon County elect that person to run that department, and if they fiscally believe that person's doing their job correctly, they reelect that person, so.
So, kind of expand on that a little bit.
Legally, 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 you're responsible for at least two departments to fund them to whatever adequacy is.
So basically, what, then, so basically, when we say we have no ability to control that elected person, that is a true statement.
Once you set the budget.
But they can still go over it, so we have no control over.
The only way, the only way that you, you stop that is that if you go for the budget, quit doing budget, budget amendments. If you don't, if you do, if you don't do budget amendments, and then you go in to non, no fund warrants, and if you go into no fund, no fund warrants, then it goes back into the, the, the elected official.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'll make it, I'm turning Susan's air.
But if you go, but if you go into a no fund warrant, if you have funds in other funds, you have to cover them.
I understand that.
And so you can't do that until you've put the county in a.
We cover up, we cover up the, we, we don't cover up, we, we go through and we do a budget amendment to cover the shortfall every year.
Let's say your boiler, let's say your boiler goes out.
And, and it comes out of the general fund.
Right, let's say your boiler goes out and two elected officials go over their budget, you, you have to make up that money for the next year's budget, and then you have to cut the budget to make up the money, the shortfall from the prior year.
Yeah, and the problem is, is you would basically have to break the county, completely break the county before you go into no fund warrants, and so the general fund continually keeps picking up all those overages.
I know we would, but if we didn't do a budget amendment, you'd have to do it on, after the first of the year.
No, you'd get a violation.
Violation.
You'd get a violation.
That's it.
Right there.
Right, and elected, an elected official, regardless of who they are, the elected official, if they wanna go over a budget, there's nothing real, I mean, Cliff, Commissioner Beth's right, there's nothing really stopping them.
No, there's not, except for.
The patrons.
Except for the appraisers, and except for Rowan Bridge.
That's unelected officials.
But those aren't elected.
No, they're not, they are not elected, but, but they can't go over their budgets, and, and they cannot, if they go over a budget, they cannot be funded from the general fund.
Well, wait, there's, well, let's, so if someone, if you're Rowan Bridge Director, and I'm a director that's not elected, that's all the look, a not-elected director, if they go over budget, there's a high probability that this commission would terminate that person's employment.
Right.
Right, so that's, that's the ultimate endgame.
And, you know, and, and, and this has been a problem, it was a problem in Rowan Bridge every year, but we had to get down and pinch pennies to make sure we didn't go over budget because we were struggling with what money we had left.
Well, that's, but that's a, that's an accounting issue, that's not a budget issue.
Very difficult to fire a director that did not have good numbers to work with.
Well, we started now that we have to go there.
It's called spade here, guys, you know?
So.
Stepping away.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not the county administrator, I'm the county counselor, so this is all opinionated, and, you know, you guys have your right to fire me, too, which, you know, I understand, so. The team has to work together, and it has to be symbiotic for it to work, so if you don't have good numbers, you don't know what you're spending, you can't spend it to the authority that you can, and that actually has happened with an elected official where the, they didn't know what their numbers were, and I know that's happened with the director, where they got to the end of their process and still thought they had money, but because the numbers weren't what they were, was not able to know that and then spent a little over. That is not a administrative issue, that is a accounting issue, so that is a different world, and we've talked about the touching, you know, having someone on a point to make sure those controls are in place, and I think the team now has that. I truly believe, I've seen a huge difference this budget cycle than the prior ones that I was involved in, so, and that's outside looking in. I stayed away from the budget, which was nice, it was very, very nice, but, you know, it's all, once again, it all ties in, our business director made a comment about our retirement and our insurance and things like that. I know of a couple of employees that work here with a diminished hourly rate because our benefit, benefit package is so good. Well, being an ex-school board negotiator for school boards, you know, the benefit package is the entire thing, and we sometimes absolutely don't take that into consideration. Your overtime, your employment benefits, your salary, to me, are all part of your benefit package, it's what you make here, and so you can massage those numbers all you want, but, you know, for someone that's 60, their ideologies are gonna be different than someone that's 25. When you're 25, you're gonna want more money in your pocket, when you're 60, you're gonna want more money in your retirement, and so there is a difference on how you manage your money when you become that elected official or become that director, and I absolutely believe in step-ups or step-downs depending on job performance, but that creates a whole nother administrative role function that we don't have currently in place as part of our team. Now, obviously, we're hoping to get there with an HR person that was in the newspaper that were trying to get that shared service, but everything takes time, and so we have that issue, too, but. Going to compensation and how an elected official runs their budget, I've been all for taking the benefits package, the FICA, the, all that stuff, and dumping it into that budget and letting that elected official manage it. The problem is, is that the minute they go over budget, the entire pie, the, the whole system gets messed up, and so I think, and not, and it's not, it's not easy fix, it just doesn't snap the fingers and it goes away, it becomes a catastrophic problem, and we've actually, I've experienced that while I've been here, we had some problems with our insurance a couple of years back, and we had to liquidate some budgets to get the makeup to occur for the general fund, and, you know, Rowan Bridge got a huge cut, I mean, it was like, it was six figures plus, and all the departments had to pinch pennies and they had to give back their, their budgets because we had to make up the difference in our insurance fund, so, you know, I understand why it was managed the way it is, because without that checks and balance, you have some major problems. I think you have the person in place now to do that checks and balance, and it could be changed, it should be changed, because I think it's unique that we don't have that benefit as part of the elected official to see, hey, look, here's what a single insurance is, this is what the family rate is, here's how much money is gonna be returned to capers, I mean, we don't, as a director, an ex-director, and an ex, you know, ex-elected official, I never knew what I actually employed really cost. I saw the amount that I paid hourly and built that into my budget, I had no clue, I always used 28%, it could be 17, 18, but I took the higher rate, but I didn't have to worry about that. And that fund, at one point, became deficient, and we had to make it up by giving money back from our budgets, and that's not good fiscal responsibility either, so, there's lots of examples of how you have to run this. And it, and Fran, it's, you know, she's made comments, it's, it's really, it's hard for people, I think Susan can probably attest to this on some levels, our system has a lot of advantages, but there's the, some of the disadvantages are just the, the processes of how the money flows, and, because an elected official, I absolutely, you have no, you have no control, once you set the budget, it's.
You're right.
Let me understand this correctly. If every elected official, you have their department pay raises, and every department went over budget, there's nothing we can do about it.
Nothing you can do about it, except, except.
That's the reason we have, that, that's the reason we have salary resolutions.
Yep.
In today's environment.
But even, but even then, I mean, I get, I get, I get with the salary resolutions.
We had departments don't go by our handbook, so that salary resolution doesn't mean anything.
Right, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that the, what would happen is, is you would have to decimate, if we, let's say we had PD or, or, let's say we had the fire, we were responsible for fire or something else, we'd have to take away from that funding to come up with the additional funding for something else. So, in the past, it's been Rowan Bridge, and they've never, they've never had that money returned, by the way.
No, they haven't.
Mm-mm, that, when that got sucked into the budget increases, it stayed there.
Even with the $150,000 that we put in, in there for the, for the bridge crew, that didn't touch, that didn't, that wouldn't happen.
Not even close, huh?
No, but see, that's the thing, it's about priorities, and that's where, you know, the couple meetings I've been where you guys have had the public forums and stuff, when we, when you guys talk about patron responsibility of being involved, it's highly important, because they have to understand, you know, in our republic, here we go, soapbox a little bit, a little bit here, but with our form of government, we have to be informed, and without that information, you can't make good decisions. So, the budget, for us, we all want our property taxes to be lower, but it's how we spend our money and what priorities are higher than others. I mean, if law enforcement is our highest priority, then that's awesome, but we need to make it our highest priority and take away from other things. And so, we've talked for years about paved roads, and so, you know, 140 miles of paved roads, do we need 140 miles or do we need 80? Do we need 200 miles of paved roads or do we need 20? I mean, not my decision, but.
So, it, it, it's not necessarily our decision either, unfortunately, it is, because we don't have the public telling us. When we had that meeting, 15 people showed up, and you were there.
There were 15 people there, guys?
Yeah.
And you all were stunned too, you know?
Right, but I'm, the other thing.
But.
People vote you into office to make decisions.
Right.
And so when you run, this goes back to the elected stuff, when you run for office, you go out and interact with people, and they vote you into office for a reason, and so, you guys are voting your constituents and also your conscience, but trying to do the right thing, I mean, this is, nationally, it's happening too, where it's tough. I mean, I, I guarantee that the two new commissioners, this is not what you expected. I mean, I guarantee it.
Well, I'll guarantee you, is when you go out and interact with the public, which I do a lot, I've done in the past, the first thing, the first thing that I get hit with, how come my property taxes are too high? Every time.
Well, and, you know, I think.
What are they gonna ask? You didn't invite Elton John, so you're not gonna get a sellout crowd.
Right. Well, yeah, I get that, so.
Come on, Michael, they come to see me and Jim, we're new.
Get up to him.
Not gonna go there, that's not, yeah, so, I mean, for me, the processes that have been happening over the last eight years and learning the system of how local government works at the county level, is, I'm fascinated with it, because you, you are unlike the other elected officials, where they are the director, administrator, the endgame, once you guys leave this room, you have no authority. And so you have to come in and form that committee-type environment to vote, at least two of you, I mean, today was a good example, you had one of the commissioners abstain, that's fine, that's his, that's what he, that's what that commissioner's been voted in office to do, and that's, that's how the system works, so. I mean, it's just a matter of your priorities, people want their property taxes lower, but we also want to have fire protection, we want to have roads, we want to have bridges, we want to have police protection, we want to have paved, I mean, it goes on and on, so, it's just a matter of priorities, and I know Commissioner Harris has asked this numerous times in this forum and other forums, what, what do you want? You know, we've talked about healthcare for, since 2018, what's it look like five years from now, what's it look like 10 years from now? I mean, what is it that the government needs to do to help citizens progress? And I think the economic development part has been a big part of that progression, where, you know, you build the base, you make taxes lower, but you still gotta perform services, we gotta keep the lights on, so.
You, 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 we get back to the statement that Cliff's made, and another comment I hear quite often is that the people in the rural areas, they don't think that they get a fair shake. You know, they don't think that they, they get provided the same level of services that a, that a large, other, other people do, and I'm gonna understand that point.
I'm moving out, I'm moving out of the city, moving into the county, and we're.
You're on a dirt road?
I'm on a dirt road.
Good.
And I'm on, I'm on limited cellphone service, I have no cellphone service where I am.
Oh, welcome to the crowd.
Yeah.
All you have to do is get rid of your rural water.
Right, right, but I, I'm making the choice to live there too.
Me too.
Right, I mean, there's, there's a reason that my dad liked to be out in Fulton, out in the middle of the prairie, because he didn't have any people around, and he could walk around to anybody.
They're making the choice to build a $500,000 house.
I get that.
There you go.
I understand, I understand that, but you want development, we want the $500,000 house.
Well, you know, and I, I don't, I don't have a problem with.
No way.
I don't.
You can't have your cake and eat it too.
I don't, I don't have a problem with people having fire hydrants at a $500,000 house as long as I don't have to pay for it, or the taxpayers don't have to pay for it.
Right.
That, there's my point, is that this, this has to be funded.
Right, but let's, let's go.
By some other.
But let's, but let's go down, let's go down, so then why, okay, here we go. So, one, one, I'm gonna make a quick comment on Commissioner Beth and Commissioner Harris' thing, without investment in infrastructure, you will never have development. And so, data drives, data drives development, so if you have a housing development that wants to go in in your county, yeah, they choose to build there, but you want them to build there, you want them to put that half a million dollar house in there, and in my opinion, you should give them every advantage you can, because it, all it does is increase your base.
So.
So if a 15 million or a $30 million project comes and it wants to be built out in the county, I, besides, you know, bending completely over backwards, because I don't completely agree with some economic development things that have happened in the past, where you roll out the red carpet and give them everything they've ever wanted, but on some levels you do, especially in rural America, where a million dollar investment doesn't happen that often. So, I mean, I get it, there's a balancing act, they choose to do that, but if you have a new employer come here, and they want to start another 100 jobs or 50 jobs, you, you do roll out the carpet on some levels, and you give them the, the advantage, and they're gonna build in the county right now because the city doesn't have an NRP, I mean, that's just, you're gonna, you're gonna go to the NRP because it gives you an advantage, so the taxpayers are paying for that.
I'd like to add, half million dollar homes times 20, I think, what that does for a tax base compared to $50,000 on a fire hydrant line, I mean.
That's the data.
Yeah, that's data.
That's data.
Economic development for our tax base, 20 houses worth half million each, paying property tax, and if we can spend $50,000 to encourage a fire line, get 20 houses paying that kind of taxes, we did well.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to, you know, my family's, my son's a multi-generational in Burman County, and I, I wanna, I want this county to survive, you know, and I, and without, without growth, you're dying.
Well, and we all understand that.
Right, so.
But how you, how you approach it, you know, we just put in a, a lot of money into a sewer district that, that is not paid for by all taxpayers, it's paid for people that use, that use.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's absolute, I mean, if, if I'm Rob, and I'm, and I'm gonna try to build a new fire station, I'm going to all those people in that district or that area that it benefits and say, I need $200 a year, $100 a year, or $50.
There you go.
I mean, there's not gonna be, I mean, they, because that's an advantage to them, if there's a cost benefit, if they're spending 500, I'm just making up numbers again, if you're spending $500 a year on insurance because you don't have a fire station next to you, why would you not give $200 a year, and 100 of you do that to build a new fire station so your rates go down?
Yep.
Why would you not do that? I mean, that's a.
That's the point I was trying to make.
As no brainer as you get, yeah. But if, you know, private-public partnerships are the future of rural America, and the data shows that, you have to have the ability for government to think outside the box, and you have the ability of private citizens wanting to invest in rural America to make it grow. And there's lots of examples in Allen County, there's lots of examples in Crawford County, there's lots of example, I mean, it's just, we got, we, we talked about this years ago, out of the box thinking has to occur for our growth, or we're just gonna go away, we won't be here, and that's not what we want. We want our children's children to have a thriving economy and a thriving place to live, and having fire protection and police protection, and good roads are part of that, and walking trails, and good parks, and, I mean, we're not building a park in northwestern Burman County, we just, because people aren't gonna use it. Now, we have a beautiful lake out there that has parks, but it's because people come there and, and want to be a part of that. Or Elm Creek, you got, you know, cabins that need to be fixed up and haven't been in years because there's no, it doesn't generate income, but it needs to be done because I think it would generate people to stay there, I mean, you gotta think out, out of the box, so.
And we are working on that.
And I completely understand where Commissioner Beth's coming from, I mean, my family lived in Fulton for still decades, we, finally, the final family farm is still owned with the family, but there's no family living out there, I mean, to me, that's just heartbreaking. But it's part of, it's part of the process, it's part of aging and, you know, our families moving away, so, or dying, because that's what's happened. I mean, the obituaries lately have been shocking.
You, you and I have tracked that for years.
It's, it's alarming right now, and it's not, I don't think, it's not COVID-related, it's just people are getting older.
Mm-hmm.
I know, you're fighting, you're fighting, Harris, just, you know, you got, you got another 20 years.
Well, my goal is 82, so I'm pretty tall.
Yeah.
That's the deal with my grandson.
Right, I understand.
That's my grandson's, nothing else.
Right, but it, once again, even, you know, death and taxes, even data's, data is tracking death, data is tracking people, I mean, the census numbers are not good.
No, they're not.
They weren't good. And it's, and it, and it's, we haven't talked about it for a reason, because, you know, we don't want to dwell on the negative, we want to move forward and do great things, and the housing market's showing that right now, people are coming here because it's a great place to live, and houses are selling because this is a great place to live, but we have to keep feeding off those half million dollar houses that are being built, and, and they're being built in the county, by the way, Commissioner Beth, which is a good thing.
No, I know.
So, I mean, that helps, helps our base.
But we can't put a fire hydrant at every half million dollar house.
No, no, but if, if there's.
Because again.
If there's 20 of them.
They choose to live there.
But if there's 20 of them, and you want.
Different than I choose to live where I do.
Right, but if there's 20 of them, and they want to build a, put a housing development in there, you absolutely should try to do everything you can to get a housing development of that kind built there.
It's your tax base.
So if somebody wants to build a apartment slash condo space.
Is that what's going on, is that, is that what's happening right now?
Indian Road, that could absolutely happen.
Can, but is it right now?
I think there's people.
That's, it's a yes or no question, counselor, we're in court.
I have a, I have a attorney-client privilege that I would not be able to divulge, but let's, let's put it this way, there are, I, I can say this for all certainty, without breaking any rules, there's absolutely people actively looking at building housing developments within our county.
Oh, I know that.
Right, well, then you've already answered the question, so it's yes.
But, well, but they have the, the location, they, I mean, talk to me about expanding their runway, that's what I want to see, you want economic development, expand that runway, put the fire department on the airport grounds.
Well, that's what we, that's one of the proposed ideas.
And that's part of the city, that's gonna have to be a collaboration with the city.
Well, the county's gonna have to be.
Are you involved in the road?
Yeah, the county's got to be involved if you build the road.
Yeah, but.
I just said, I just said, it's a collaboration between the city and the county.
That's all, they were gonna pay for it.
Well, but that, but, but then, let's say, okay, so let's.
I mean, I mean, I'd be more interested in building a fire station there.
Right, that's.
And then you must see, you want to see a growth.
That's one, that's one of the areas that's being looked at, yeah, so.
Then you're gonna be huge growth.
But like, but let's talk, that's a perfect example of what I'm talking about, I think we're saying the same thing, Commissioner, I mean.
Probably are.
Airport, airport expansion brings in people, it brings in growth, it brings in the base, and we're, and we're willing, if you're willing to put a mil, I mean, I'm, I don't know how many vote, but if someone's willing to put a million dollars into a apartment complex or condos on Indian Road, and they wouldn't do it without X, Y, and Z, and X, Y, and Z makes fiscal sense, then you do X, Y, and Z, and X, Y, and Z might be fire hydrants, tie into the sewer line, and get some three-phase power across the highway. Why wouldn't you do that? If you, if it's affordable, I mean, if it costs $10 million, you're not gonna do it, but if it costs $100,000 or $50,000 to put in, you know, that, to me, that's fiscally responsible to taxpayers to grow, grow the base.
If that's, if that's truly this commission's objective at all, discussions need to happen sooner than later, because we are on a timeline with the FAA, and if, if we take too long to get there, then we have to start the process completely over by doing all the environmental and all the studies and everything.
Well, I, I think an angled runway is better than taking your road out, but that's my opinion.
I do too.
We haven't met with the city since January.
Yeah, we need to set up another.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't heard any updates.
I know, they're anxious to do that.
I think it should wait till after the election, that's my opinion.
So, well, let's, let's go down, let's do that just a little bit.
We haven't had a good banter, we haven't had a good banter in a couple months, too.
Looks like to me, looks like to me, we're not gonna have.
Got lots of.
Have any meetings for the next two weeks.
That's right.
We aren't.
No, next week.
Or, or, can't, okay.
Miss a week, then you have a meeting, then you miss a week.
No.
Or you have.
Okay, maybe so. We're gonna miss next week.
Next week's KAC.
KAC. And then, then we have, then.
That can't.
Then you didn't want any, any, because you have only voted.
You're going, I hope you don't miss it, yeah.
So we will be back after the election.
You can, you should go, it's really good, that's why you missed, you missed your first year, because of COVID. You can, you should go, it's really good. That's why you missed, you missed your first year because of COVID.
When does early voting start?
November 20th.
November 20th. October 20th, sorry.
Yeah.
October 20th.
November 20th.
I'm gonna miss August.
Four o'clock.
November 4 o'clock, oh, okay.
So we're not meeting the 19th, 26th, or the 2nd?
So if you want, if you want to go on the radio next week,
Yes.
You can and talk about the election at 7:45. Because there'll be about two or three minutes early. Okay?
Today's the last day, come to the courthouse and register to vote. So everybody come on down.
Okay.
You do have to raise your vote, it's all about a meeting day.
And one, one last comment, Commissioner Beth, while I was saying or thinking.
Do that here and say
It is, it is about, it is about priorities. I mean, Susan said it. I mean, it's where you want to put your money, so. There will be. Well, if he needs to do it, he will. He's our economic development director, show him that text message and
Oh, Lord, what am I getting into now?
Okay, so no meeting for three weeks?
No meeting for three weeks.
Well, look at me.
We're never, we're never open on election day.
Well, I know that, but
We've done, have we done it in the past the same way?
I'd say do it today.
Because they have early voting in here.
Can't move to different rooms, bad, bad idea.
Well, you're not going to be able to tell them why that or anything else.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't care.
We can survive.
Oh, yeah. So our next meeting is November the 9th?
We're not done.
We're not done. We're discussing.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked if I
Give me a headache.
Are you done with me, Kai Koshers?
Well, as long as my alleged coma deal's okay, I'm okay.
I, I don't, I've, I've only, I've been in every executive session except for one and
As I said, and that's not my, that was not my point.
Right, I don't believe there was a coma violation, but if you guys believe there is one, I will absolutely self-report.
No, that was not my point. My point was that they were all legal, just No, legal, but in my own opinion
So, Miracle
Waste of your time.
Unwaste of my time.
Right.
Michael, Miracle has, here has a great product, help.
I thought you said, you just said it was legal but not illegal.
No, I think, I think that, but I think that finishing up the banter is, is that the budget is a big deal, and controlling it is really important because that's really what you guys have been voted in office for. And having elected officials go over budget, which I, eight years is what Commissioner Beth's, I mean, it's
No, I've made that
Right, but it's, it's been a lot of years.
It's not easy.
I've heard eight years.
It is not easy to come up with $80,000 out of the general fund.
But how can we be responsible for it if we can't do anything about it?
Well, you, you can, you could publicly, you get public, like, you publicly, you
Shane was the one who used, Shane?
No, change it.
Change.
Well, yeah, you have to
You got home rules, you can make, you can make a home rule as long as you can
Well, you can't, you can't with the elected officials.
No, you can't.
No, no, you can't. Now, you can do it, you can do it.
Attorney General's already given us an opinion.
Yeah, the Wyandotte, Wyandotte County and Green County, they'll choose, they've consolidated their government. You have to put that up in front for a vote. You can't, you can't wave the magic wand and get rid of the elected officials.
No.
Now, home rule gives you some advantages on your budget start, but there's, there's two by statute you have to fund, and so if they decide to spend a million dollars, theoretically, you'd have to fund them and then take them, take that elected official to court, but once again, we're all on the same, we're all on the same team, you know, we're trying to
Are we?
I, I have no clue. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, I, I get Commissioner Beth's frustration. I mean, getting involved in this, you guys are on eight months now. This process of government is, is frustrating at times.
Yeah.
But it's the way it's worked, and at some levels it works because you have your checks and balances, and we've lost some of that internally, but it's coming back. I think the budget's gonna be better so a director, next year's paving season is gonna know exactly how much money they have in their account, how much they can spend, and how much more half mile they can do. Because right now, that's, well, as a month ago, that wasn't possible.
Right. And with Susan's help, us monitoring it differently, we ought to be able to tell an elected official in October, you've got to do something different. You're gonna be over budget.
Well, you, you can make this suggestion. You can say, hey, look, you're gonna be over budget, please, we're asking you not to affect our, our, our fund, but if they wanted to go over budget, that's on them, and then the patrons of our fine county, we get to vote on them in the next cycle and say, we want that person in or out. That's the final check is, the final check on all this, Ann, is elected people, people getting elected.
So I should ask every, whatever's, an elected official is elected, when an elected doc comes around, how do I find out how many times they went over budget?
You can find that out now.
You can find that out right there.
I can get it to you. Okay.
And really, that's, 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 all these years, Ann, all these years, that's the question that I can't believe has never been asked.
Okay.
It, it never has been.
I'll get there.
So you use that to vote them out?
No, you just use that as a decision-making process. You can keep, you can keep that in or, keep them in or not. We worry about taxes and that's how it's spent is important, and I am absolutely all for people getting more money and getting raises. I mean, I totally am. We're I, I've been advocating for years for the sheriff to get detectives and things like that, but it's a matter of priorities, and where do you want to put your money?
How many people would we have in the US Congress that could base that on, how many times they went over budget?
Well, geez. Yeah.
Be a lot fewer.
Well, we, we'd have a diff, we'd have, once again, this is a political statement. We would have a, I think if people really did care about that issue, we'd have a different type of person in, at the federal level. Or the state level.
Maybe it would take so much home.
Or spend it differently, or spend it differently, but the priorities would maybe shift.
Man, I don't need home to the, the old
No.
Take it home to the
No, I mean, you know, when you have, I mean, you have a senator or a house member that's been in the seat for 80 years, I'm making up a number again, their priorities are gonna be different than someone that's coming right out and starting fresh as a freshman senator or house member. They have a different ideology.
Well, and there are different ways that you can budget. You don't have to budget based on what you've done in the past. You can do what they, what they call priority-based budgeting. So basically, every year, your priorities are set beginning of the year, and then you, you base your budget off of that.
Our last commission tried that.
It, it's difficult.
We tried it.
It worked very well, though.
We got to, we got to, what was it, long-term benefits or, we got to a point where we were trying to give a, a bonus to people that longevity pay, and we started looking at it as a way to do it as a set fund every year, you know, for those people that every year got additional, and so we started looking at the budget 10 years from now, and we couldn't fund it. It went from like $58,000 on year one, and then by year 10, it was like at 106, and the budget wouldn't support the 106 part, and that, that to me is where Susan's got a tough road ahead of her because you give a raise now, it affects your budget 10 years from now.
Yes, it does.
And so your priorities have to be in line with that raise, so if, and inflation isn't gonna go away, and so your insurance rates, your, your fuel rates, everything else is gonna go up. I mean, you might get an inflection on your fuel, but
And every year, we're
Workers' comp's gonna go up.
Well, every year it is. So basically, what you've raised, the taxes, each year, it appears, is to cover those increases in insurance or comp, liability insurance and
And, and this, this is an absolute statement to, to give the elected officials kudos on this. They have no clue, they have an idea of what that increase looks like, but they have no clue what that increase looks like because they've never been given that information and have never been responsible for it.
You know, and I don't know about you, but, but the insurance cost in my private world has gone up 12% to 15% every year for years.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I agree with Sheriff Martin on this. You should bid out your insurance every year, but there's once again priorities involved with that that if you take away a benefit, you're taking away money out of your pocket because it's a total package, and so when you have someone pay a family rate at a higher rate, it's basically a pay cut. Out of pocket, it's a better benefit, but that person who cares about having more money in their pocket, that goes away, and so at that point, they're either gonna leave or they're gonna have to give them a raise to make up the difference.
You know, and I've experienced too, you go into a cheaper plan, your, your office expenses go up, you're, you're out of pocket, expenses go up, you know.
Right, but, but a 25-year-old doesn't care. They'd rather have more money in their pocket. I, I mean, I did it 25. I didn't give a fui about health insurance at 25. And that, you know, now that I'm getting closer to 50
But that's why you, that's why you offer more than one plan.
Right.
Because you can give them options.
Well, and everyone
We don't have a whole lot of options without two. Is that right? And so
With an HSA.
Yeah, the HSA is definitely for those 25-year-olds.
Right, right. You have a third option technically with an HSA. But I'm just saying, it's, it goes back to what Harrison, Commissioner Beth, and, I mean, it's about priorities, and it's about, you know, that's the thing about 15 people, Ann, let's say it was, it was 100 people. It's still about having their voices heard, and sometimes, we all know, because you guys have been here forever, it's a lack of voices. Because they, you know, the comment at Walmart, don't raise my property taxes, that's easy to say. And then when you ask the question in one of these meetings, what would you do to do different, and it's crickets. And I understand information, you have to have the data to make the decision, but, I mean, Commissioner Harris has asked, I know at least five times in one meeting, what would you do, and it was no response from anybody.
Yeah.
Everybody wants their road paved. Everybody wants a fire hydrant. Everybody wants a fire station. Everybody wants, you know, so I don't know. That's why I've always said this. I don't want to be Commissioner. I'm not gonna ever run, so life is good. Thank you, Commissioner Beth, for running.
You don't count.
Am I done now? Please, can I be done?
Holy guys, people work, live, and they're original.
Don't have to still stand here. Please, can I leave?
Yeah.
Because he called, he called me back. He said, come back up here.
Let's see. So, let's, my comments, did you get your comments?
I don't have any.
You don't have any? Collected, are you done?
I'd like to amend the agenda to allow Rob Harrington a few minutes.
So how about, how about give me a little bit of time on the, or the commissioner's comments, and, you know, I'll, I'll be quiet then. So, so next, next Tuesday is the KAC meeting. Monday and Tuesday.
There's no meeting.
No meeting. We have early voting and the, the setup of being here, they said they'd be a lot less disruptive on our stuff this year. And the second is election. So your options are, well, there's no options because we really can't have a meeting in this room on the, on the week of the 18, or the 25th and the 1st.
You're mad at the city before, I mean, I'm sorry.
So whatever you want to do. Ashley won't be here on the 26th or the 2nd.
Would be possible.
And you'll be doing the election.
The 26th, if we can't come here, would be possible to have a lunch with the city as a group and talk. Since we can't come here, the 26th, that Tuesday, maybe, I, just an ideal. I don't, it might be a bad idea, I don't know, but
Who's buying?
They are. City's buying.
Yeah, but they protested that they have a meeting with you guys, so I can check the
Well, just an ideal, but that way we will be in some kind of function without skipping three weeks.
You want an afternoon?
Yeah, city by lunch.
And bill it back.
This is an ideal, I don't know.
I'll check and then I'll report back.
You won't see us again, so
I can take minutes.
You'll have to send us
I understand it's televised, so I can go back and watch it.
You'll have to send us an email because we won't be back here attached or something, so. That was a bad idea. You guys are busy, I don't know, but
Does that work for you guys?
Well, it'd be nice to down visit with, like, the fire station, maybe at the airport and things like that.
I can make it that way.
I'll check and I'll report back.
We're no meeting in this room the 19th, 26th, or the 2nd, correct?
So if we go to the city. We can make a motion to do that, and then the city will have to approve it.
I'll make a motion, we will not have a meeting in this commission meeting October 19th because of KAC, October 26th because of early voting, and November 2nd because of the election. With the possibility of a meeting with the city of Fort Scott at lunch on the 26th, possibility.
With all three commissioners.
All three commissioners.
Here, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Push your carriage. Okay, he made a motion for amending the agenda.
Yeah.
I'll go back to
I would make a motion to amend the agenda to allow Mike, Mr. Hoyt, he was not here during public comments, so to allow him some, a few
And Rob?
Seconds, yeah, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. And Rob Harrington, some time at the podium, because they were not here during that time.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Push your carriage. Michael, you're up.
He'll be longer than you, probably.
Good morning. Sorry I wasn't here earlier. A question about the early voting. Ashley, are we gonna have evenings or Saturday in the schedule?
I'm working on it, but I've got to get workers lined out. We're still scheduling workers to work, so we have staff.
Well, just as soon as we know, I would let Jason know so we can get it out there. Is that, that was encouraging that we were gonna have Saturday or, or evening.
We're hoping to have like an evening and maybe a Saturday morning.
Yeah, I think one each would be fine.
If we have a good turnout, we can always add more, but
It's a big election. Anybody that's a veteran, I invite you, I guess I can invite to the VFW hall tonight and to do a presentation on a Veterans Road to 100% disability conversation and how to get there, or how to file a claim, those kind of things. So it'll just be a nut and bolts discussion. If you know anybody that's having trouble receiving VA benefits, you could also just put them in touch with me and I'll be happy to work with them. I think that's all I had.
Marah, thank you, Alex Parker.
Thanks, Mike.
Rob?
Robert. Robert Harrington.
Good morning. I am here to ask the county commission a very specific question. I know we've been discussing budgets and stuff, and here I'm gonna be asking you to give back money or not take money, but my question is, there is, the McDonald Hall building downtown Fort Scott is a very important building to the downtown area. It is the second oldest building in Fort Scott, I believe, 1865, if I remember correctly. The condition of that facility, that building has been deteriorating for the last four years while the taxes have not been paid. The taxes currently are $15,600, and I can tell you, just give me a second. Sorry. What I'm asking from the commission today is to agree to waive that upon the purchase of, the purchase of the building by a new individual and on condition that the building be renovated and then used, thereby raising the property values. So
Is that the old chop house building?
The old chop house building, yeah. It's just the two, so the entire building is actually three spaces, but one of the spaces have already been redone and is being used in the antique store. The old chop house, and there's another, another re, section of it where the old safe is. If you walk by, you can see a safe there. Those facilities are dilapidated, they have not been taken care of. Honestly, when the assessor goes in there, the assessment will probably be lowered on that facility because of the condition it's in, and so what I'm asking is the county to agree to waive the $15,600 and whatever dollars on the condition that it be sold to a new owner and that the new owner renovates the facility to therefore making it assess at a, at a higher value.
My question is, I'm sure we can have authority to waive it.
Just count, only waive county taxes.
County taxes. But the new owner doesn't do anything, do we have the power to put them back on? Okay.
He would be setting a precedent.
Yeah.
Again, we
I mean, is
Yeah, it's Yes, that's what I'm saying. It's, yeah, it would basically, the building, it
I have a, if you want to, this is the first time this has happened, and, you know, the time I've been county councillor, I represent the new, potential new owners of that building, so I don't want to create any conflict. I mean, I can ask, I can answer questions that are broad-based, but I can't answer any questions that would be specific to that, that building. So I want a full disclosure. So if you need to, we need to get another attorney to answer those questions, I'll for it, but but Rob's on point. I mean, whatever his, the information he's giving is you, but you, the question is, you can only waive county taxes.
If we don't sell it, we don't, or if we don't, if we don't waive the taxes, it's probably gonna hinge on the sale.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it would, and then the building's just gonna dilapidate more. I do not believe the current owner will end up paying. It's been four years. I'd say paid, that's why it's such a high amount.
So we're gonna have another building collapse?
I'm, I am not an engineer, I cannot say that.
I mean, what's the city's position on this? Because it's in the city limits.
Yeah, the city has been working with the owner to gain access and to try and find a buyer and to help with this, with the owner, the current owner. So she's been very cooperative up to this point.
Is the city gonna waive their portion of the taxes?
I can't answer that, but we'd have to call a special meeting to do that.
I've had conversations outside, so.
What?
Have you got a nice to know?
Just make a contingent.
Yeah, you could make a contingent on that. We could call a special meeting. I don't know how many we would get there.
So you're going to just have your, at your next meeting, go in there, you're running this emergency, just make a contingent on the city approving.
So we can do this on the 26th? Oh, okay.
Yeah, their meeting's next Tuesday.
Contingent on the city's decision as well.
So we can add that to the, what I just said, contingent upon the city approving and To be completely honest with you, it, all that I have here is just, it says 2016 to 2020 real estate taxes, PIN number, blah, 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 to Bourbon County Treasurer, $15,638.78. It is not broken down to what
So all you have to do is make a motion to
What's that?
The county portion of the taxes.
Yeah, okay.
It does
Contingent upon.
What's that? You have a street address?
Huh?
You have a street address?
It's, I don't know what the street address to the old chop house is.
Chop, you don't want to call the chop house building?
That's fine. It's McDonald Hall, but yeah, I would say the chop house.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Make a motion for the county to waive its portion of the back taxes on the Chop House slash McDonald Building downtown Fort Scott. Contingent on the city of Fort Scott waiving their portion of the taxes as well.
And
And
Depending on
Sale.
The sale and
Depending on the sale and that it's not sold.
10, 10 and 12 South Main.
10 and 12, 10 and 12 South Main.
10 and 12 South Main, 10 now, South Main 12.
If it's not sold, the taxes go back on the building?
Well, sold and renovated.
Yeah, if it's
And renovate, yeah.
If it's not sold, they go back.
Okay. Go here a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I am really, really concerned of the precedent we are setting.
I, I would say in a, in a perfect world, I would like
The land bank should be in existence.
It should be, there you go.
That's exactly what
That's why I talked to Robert about it. It would have been a better process had we, had we pushed into the land bank to, to have these discussions. But from, from the city's perspective, I know we've worked very hard to try and save this building because of all the adjoining buildings and how if this building goes, then it causes and how if this building goes, then it causes a lot bigger problem. So if you wanna base it on that, I think that's a better, that's a better conversation as far as setting precedent, it's a, it's an old building that's gonna affect you and just.
And I will say that we're working right now with the city to redo the land bank so that we can use it the way it's intended to be used, which would be, this would be a perfect example of how that would be used in the future, so we're just, this just happened so quick that I'm coming to you asking for this.
It would have possibly been donated to the land bank had we not had a buyer. I think maybe that's how the process would have gone, and, and the city already has a structure in place, if it goes through the land bank, and there is a set of guidelines that can be followed, that we will waive the taxes if certain things happen, but there's very, there's restrictions in place already. So.
Okay.
And I can share that with the county, so that they can see that process.
You're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I would just make your renovation where it can be definable as habitable, so it's just not.
Sounds like they have it.
Yeah, it's not renovation.
Any adjourned?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Nope.
We've, we've done a lot of rapids, that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'm calling on the land bank, but I'm not looking to.
Oh, I tell you what, that should have happened years ago.
Well, I'm on that board, and it's what worries me.
Can't talk about it now.